Okay, well, by my watch, it's six o'clock. All right, so, thank you. Nancy, we're recorded, so we'll welcome everyone. I have very little to say at the moment. I'm just excited to kick off 2023 with a new council and a new mayor. I actually asked Judge Larry Blake, who is our municipal court judge, to join us today and want to thank him for making time to be here tonight. And I've asked Judge Blake to actually conduct the swearing in ceremonies for the mayor and for two new city councillors. So with that, I think I'm going to hand it over to Judge Blake.
That's exciting.
And welcome. Again, I'm Larry Blake. Actually, this is one of the few times you'll ever see me in a robe, so make sure everybody gets. Because I'm not one for formalities, but I figured when we're swearing in somebody, I'll put a robe on just for you folks. With that, I'd like to first swear in the mayor electa, and so Ms. Simmons, if you'd raise your right hand, please. And are you in my view now? I'd like to be able to see you.
Can you see me? I am right here. My right hand is up.
There you are. Now I see you. Thank you. Please repeat after me. I, Deb Simmons.
I, Deb Simmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Manzanita.
Of the city of Manzanita.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of, excuse me, discharge the duties of, I'm going to change my script here, where it says city councillor, to discharge my duties as city mayor.
To discharge my duties as city mayor.
Of the city of Manzanita.
Of the city of Manzanita.
In the city of, in the county of Tillamook.
In the county of Tillamook.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Judge. I appreciate it.
No problem. And to the city manager, if you can change that in the oath, that would be appropriate. I'm ready to do the, I have two more to do, I believe, and I have Linda Kozlowski to do.
It's me.
Hi, okay, and you're looking like you're, you're ready. I saw your hand ready to go.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
Kozlowski.
I, Linda Kozlowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Manzanita.
Of the city of Manzanita.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
Discharge the duty of city councillor.
Of the city of Manzanita.
Of the city of Manzanita.
In the county of Tillamook.
In the county of Tillamook.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the very best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, councillor.
Thank you. I'm excited.
And lastly, I believe I have Brad Merrily.
Yes, correct.
And I'll wait for you to come up on my screen.
Raise your right hand, Brad, so he can see you.
Do something.
Raise your hand.
Is anybody can bring him up on the screen. Merrily.
He should be there. He should be there.
I think if you say something, it'll pop up.
I can see you.
Jumping Japs? There you go. Okay, great. I, Brad Merrily.
I, Brad Merrily.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Milwaukee.
Oops. Oh, no. Nope, 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 wrong city.
Manzanita, city of Manzanita.
City of Manzanita.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties as of city councillor.
Discharge the duties of city councillor.
Of the city of Manzanita.
Of the city of Manzanita.
In the, in the county of Tillamook.
In the county of Tillamook.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Do that one.
I apologize for, I was reading a script here and I messed up. I apologize for that. First of all, congratulations.
Appreciate your presence. Thank you.
I appreciate it, and again, I'm going to make a plug because we always do this, court meets once a month, and if any of the councillors want to come and watch, I'm actually entering my 27th year as your municipal court judge. So I'm hoping that at some point you can get down and see what we do in court. That would be great. And if anybody else has any questions, otherwise I'll terminate the call at this time. Have a good evening.
All right, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so as Mayor Simmons, I call the January 4th, 2023 meeting of the Manzanita City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted by Zoom video conference. The public has been invited to watch the meeting on the city's YouTube channel or by logging into the Zoom webinar as an attendee. The public may submit comments in writing by email to cityhall@ci.mansanita.or.us. There will be opportunities for the public to give oral testimony during today's meeting. When it is time to take public comment, staff will monitor the Zoom participant list to see if anyone would like to speak. We will take comments in the order that they are received and seen. I would like to just inject that we had the power go out earlier today, so I just need to mention that if we should lose power tonight, the plan is to wait approximately 10 minutes, and if the power doesn't come back on, the staff and council will confer about how to proceed. Anything to add to that, Ms. Amon?
No, Mayor, I think that covers it. I think what we would do just for the community to know is we would post the meeting on the city's website when we got power, and we would do that as soon as possible, and so the information that the community would need to join back up to the meeting, if we need to do that, would be on the city's website as soon as we're able to post it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Before we officially start our meeting, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Scott for his six years of service to Manzanita as mayor and for serving on the planning commission even before that. Much was required of a mayor when COVID first hit, and I still hear folks talk about how well that crisis was navigated. Councillor Nuttall has given over five years of service to our city. He did much to facilitate turning the golf course into a permanent green space for our city, which was no light achievement. From all citizens of Manzanita, we thank you both for the years of hard work, time, and heart that you've devoted on our behalf. I would also like to thank the staff for helping this relatively new council secure the pieces to understand the threshold on which we are about to cross. Change is seldom easy, but each one of you has gone out of your way to help, and it's appreciated. To get here, my path this year and a half has been mainly in research tied with previous decades in classrooms and in the business world. With the help of neighborhood groups and talented community members, we looked at issues facing the city and how to pull together reports that answer many questions. I was asked to run for mayor and supported every step of the way by these groups, and I'd like to take a minute to thank each and every one of these people. When we think of issues in this city, we think of a new city hall and STRs. These are in the forefront. However, we need to bring back up those projects and problems that might have fallen through the cracks. We have items that aren't as glaring, but they are important to individuals. The same goes for paths, dune grading, different programs that may be putting a mat down on the beach so that there's wheelchair access. All of these need to be itemized and shifted to the council so that we can evaluate and review them in a planned session. We also need to reaffirm ourselves to high personal standards so that all citizens, residents, second homeowners, staff, visitors, and retailers are treated fairly with respect and kindness. President Zelensky in Ukraine said, "People don't really believe in words." Or rather, "People believe in words only for a short stretch of time. Then they start to look for action." I am before you tonight with a commitment to action, along with these other councillors by my side. Like so many of you, I love Manzanita. I am humbled by your support, and we as a council are ready to go to work. So I am going to just very through the roll call and make sure, I'm going to each councillor, if you have read the packet. There's a councillor packet that's put together by staff with all the information that we need for tonight. So councillor Merrily, do you prefer councillor Merrily or Brad?
Brad, please.
Brad. Did you read, did you read the packet?
Yes, I did read the packet.
Okay, councillor Spreckman.
Yeah, I prefer Jerry and I didn't.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, councillor Kozlowski.
I prefer Amanda, and yes, I did.
Okay, and councillor Edgington.
I prefer Jenna, and yes, I read the packet as well.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. This is the part of the agenda during which the council will hear community member statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak, please raise your hand or indicate that you wish to speak. If you would, before you make your comments, though, you need to state your name and the city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to cityhall@ci.mansanita.or.us. Because the council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the December 7th community comments, Ms. Amon?
No, ma'am.
Okay. How do we, how are we notified about comments from the community?
Mayor, this is Nancy. We do have one comment, Donna Miller. I can go ahead and let her in if that's okay.
Yes, please, thank you.
Donna, go ahead and speak.
Okay, Happy New Year to everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. Welcome to our new mayor and council. Thank you all for your commitment to the health and livability of Manzanita. I also want to say thank you and give kudos to our Public Works employees who are doing a great job cleaning up debris from the storm. I've been, they were, I saw them working so hard yesterday. Our street was full of stuff and they got it all cleaned up, and guess what? Last night it hit again, and they were out there first thing this morning, so I really, really appreciate that. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thanks. Thank you. I know there were a lot of trees down. I talked to Dan earlier, and I think there were numerous trees down all over the city. Are there any other comments?
Mayor, no, there is not.
Okay, thank you for your comments, and now we're going to move to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting December 7th, regular session, approval of bills for payment, including approving all checks proceeding approved by the city manager and the city council. Does any member of the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Jerry, Brad, Linda, Jenna? No. Okay. So what I'm looking for now is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who said, Jenna?
Jenna.
Okay, so thank you. We have a motion moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, say nay. Okay. Moving on to the selection of the council president. The first order of business for this new council will be to nominate and elect a president of the council. Are there any nominations for the position of council president?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Linda Kozlowski to return as our council president.
To return, okay. Linda, are you comfortable accepting that nomination and that role?
I absolutely am. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's going to be sort of a step up on the expectations going forward and, okay.
All right. I'm really looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, second. So we have received a motion for Linda Kozlowski to be council president. It was seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And all opposed, nay? Okay, so the motion is passed. Moving on to in-person council meetings. The action requested is that the, for the council to listen to a staff report from the city manager remark regarding the cost and the logistics of moving to in-person council, city council meetings. After we've had this presentation, the council will discuss the cost and provide the staff with direction on the type, date, and frequency of city council meetings if and if any new meetings will be proposed. The council will also provide direction on whether staff should pursue in-person planning commission meetings. So we'll take the in-person city council meetings first. Ms. Amon?
Thank you. So I'm just going to verbally go through the staff report that was provided to provide a sort of an overview of what it would take for us to hold in-person meetings. It's something that staff have been anticipating might come up as a question, so we're happy to be prepared to discuss that with you. So we've been holding all of our meetings virtually since I got here, but since March of 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, there have been restrictions for meetings. They've declined, and there's interest by the council and the planning commission to return to in-person meetings. But two key things have changed since council and planning commission last held in-person meetings. The first is the city no longer has a safe public meeting space to hold those meetings that belongs to us. And second, the state passed HB 2560, which requires public meetings provide a call-in or virtual option for folks to be able to listen and participate in public meetings. So it means if we go back to in-person meetings, those meetings do need to be hybrid and require some measure of technology and staff support. So we investigated a few options, but I had to make some assumptions about that, and so this budget is influenced by those assumptions. But the proposal assumes that all the meetings will be held at the Pine Grove Community House. Be, to be able to use those facilities on a regular, ongoing, committed basis, it's important that we pay for that space. And so I've attached a rental proposal that I've received from the Pine Grove Community House that would allow us to do that, and their board is open to allowing the city to utilize and reserve that space up to a year in advance. The proposal assumes that the city will continue to provide the highest quality possible access to the meetings through the virtual option. So technically, we just have to provide like a phone or a conference call phone. The assumption I went into this is that we would still be able to maintain this Zoom format for folks that are participating virtually and integrate it with an in-person system. So that way, special guests, audience members, and others would still be able to access that meeting or participate through the Zoom platform. They can also call in. This also assumes that we'll be live streaming our videos as well, our meetings. And the in-person meetings require additional support from our IT consultant, so the proposal assumes about two and a half hours on the front and back end of each meeting. That's pretty conservative. So it shouldn't be more than that, but it's often not going to be less. So I just want folks to kind of know that in their mind that if it's a two-hour meeting we're planning for, we still need time on either end in order to prepare and tear down. The hardware proposal that's included assumes that the IT consultant will be providing most, if not all, of the necessary video and audio equipment. So we actually don't have to buy very much in order for this to happen because our IT consultant has a lot of that material. So those are cost savings to us there. The analysis I did just focuses on an eight hours, like an all-day rental of the space, and that staff will set up the meeting, technology, and tear down, and assumes two hours of overtime for the public works staff person that will come back after hours to help with those meetings. And then costs are calculated on a monthly and an annual basis. So looking at that, the monthly estimate to return to sort of one in-person meeting, so doing our, and this again is based on kind of our normal, not normal, I should say, our current way of doing business, which may change as a result of this conversation. So I wanted to give you a monthly estimate per meeting so you can understand sort of what the impacts would be. So we estimate, again, this is conservative, $735 per meeting. Again, if the meeting was a little shorter, you can imagine there'd be some cost savings, not a huge amount, because the IT and the public works time still need to be accounted for no matter how long the meeting is. And an annual cost estimate for that's close to $9,000. It's 808, $8,820. So this is just help for you to have for context as you think about potentially doing other meetings, and I just wanted you to be aware of that as you consider whether or not staff should move forward with the planning commission if they have an interest in moving into in-person meetings. In terms of timeline, we could be ready to go virtually within a few weeks. So if council gave us direction today, sorry, to be in person, to move to in person, we should be ready by the February meeting. With that, there's, I had estimated as part of the professional services budget line item for the administration that there was a potential for us to return to in-person meetings. So I did allocate $10,000 of professional services to that effort for the fiscal year 2223 budget. I do assume that a number of those resources that have been allocated won't be spent this fiscal year, so if the council elects to move forward, there's sufficient resources within the budget to accommodate that. But would, staff would like direction on whether or not these costs need to be considered moving forward as we start to prepare for the fiscal year 24 budget. In terms of workload impact, the current schedules maintain. It doesn't really have an impact on us, even in in-person meetings. Staff will be probably staying a little longer than we would in Zoom platform, but it's not, not significant. In-person meetings that require, will require some overtime work from public work staff and additional hours for IT consultants. If we do add additional meetings, whether they're during business hours or after hours, that does have an impact on staff time, but those are manageable impacts. But again, it will require additional overtime from public work staff and additional time from the IT consultant. So staff really don't have a recommendation on this. This is actually, I'm going to defer this to the mayor to facilitate a discussion around whether or not to return to in-person city council meetings, whether you're interested in adding additional meetings, and to please give staff some direction on whether or not we should proceed with working with the planning commission to authorize in-person meetings. Because there's a budgetary impact, I think it's important that city council provide that direction to staff.
Certainly. Is this a place where we would share comments that we've had from citizens? Because I've heard from six people specifically in support of in-person meetings and one person opposed. Brad, I know we've talked about this. You had some comments to make that I think are important. Can you share those now, please?
Sure. Thanks, Dad. You know, my thought is, well, what I heard while I was out campaigning was that the majority of people want to return to in-person meetings, and it was important to them. I believe I campaigned on transparency, and I think being transparent means being present. And I, I will tell you, I've come back and forth a little bit on it. I've had some concerns with knowing that, knowing people in town that have contracted COVID, and I think that's what we're probably all concerned about. And I, but I think that people are going to have to make that decision for themselves whether they want to attend a meeting. And I would be in favor of having in-person meetings, I think. I'd like to, I, obviously, it's not happening this month. I know that we have a lot going on this month with staff time and things. I, I wouldn't be opposed to starting in March, having our first our first open meeting in March and continuing there, they're continuing forward from there.
Okay. Jerry, what, is that it, Brad? Are you done? Okay, Jerry, how about you?
Well, I think, first of all, I want to thank the city manager for the detailed report. I think it reflects the fact that the city and the city council has been thinking about trying to figure out how to return to in-person meetings for a long time. It's not anybody's choice to rely on Zoom. We're in a situation that was dictated by external forces and we're reacting to it the best we can. At this point, it seems to me that we need, we had a conversation before Christmas at the first staff retreat, or excuse me, council retreat, about having work sessions on a day other than the city council meeting and possibly also having study sessions, a sort of a corollary to, to work sessions or a preliminary step to a work session, a formal work session. So that would, of course, add meetings, and then, of course, the planning commission issue hasn't been resolved yet. So it feels like as thorough as the report and analysis was from Leila, we have to figure out those other couple of things, because once we do, we'll plug those in, and it's either going to increase the money or it's going to make us choose perhaps to have some meetings in person and some meetings not in person. I would think that if that were our only consideration, the March timeline would work, because I think we'd have enough time to figure those things out between now and March. The COVID, obviously, we're doing these meetings in first instance because of COVID, and we are presumably on the brink of finding out what kind of an impact the holiday season had on COVID locally and in the state and on the healthcare system. And so we can sort of find out both things at once. It would seem to me by March, we're going to know how many. we're going to know how many work sessions we're going to have. We're going to know the scheduling of them. We're going to know the potential cost of those if they're all in person. And we're also going to know more about the, the holiday impact on COVID. And so I would certainly agree to aim for March, but to be perfectly blunt, I don't, I don't know that we should promise anybody a March start. I think if we, if we put in place a strategy to try to make Lila's plan come true in March with some adjusted numbers, uh, and then we get adjusted numbers on COVID, we'll make the right decision. And so I, I, I guess I wouldn't be, I don't think I'd like to vote that we're going to have a March meeting in person. I'd like to vote that we intend to resume in March if we can. And I think we've got several to-dos between now and then. And one, and one of them, for example, I think what we should probably think through as a council is if, uh, if we have a hybrid meeting, does that allow a counselor to participate via Zoom? Because to be perfectly honest, if we had live meetings in the last two months, I think at least three counselors would have had to stay home. So I, I think, and, and so that's a, that's a reasonable thing for us to just think about ahead of time before we throw the switch button on, on live meetings. And I think we can do all of that pretty easily and cleanly between now and and March. So I like, I like Brad's target, and I hope it comes true, but I think we got a few things to, to cover between now and then.
Work out. Okay. It was a lot of work, Leila, to pull all those numbers together and it, I mean, it's very clear what the cost is. Linda, how about you? Your thoughts?
Well, I, uh, I'm certainly in support of in-person meetings as soon as it is appropriate. I kind of like the direction that, that Jerry went. I, you know, I think there's some really legitimate concerns that we can deal with easily, which Leila has dealt with in terms of costs and facilities. I think there are others that are not so easy to deal with, and that's the current environment with COVID and influenza in that state. OHA officials recently stated, and I quote, "The combination of surging flu, RSV, and COVID-19 cases are pushing our hospitals past their current capacity, worse than the darkest days of COVID-19 pandemic in Oregon." Uh, COVID tests positive in Oregon have jumped from one to thirty percent. And Eric Swanson, the CEO of Adventist, on the meeting yesterday, indicated that only three percent of the emergency department beds were available in the state of Oregon. You know, so I'd say that currently, it's not, it's not looking great. Like in March, maybe totally different. So I, I agree with that. But I, I was also thinking that there might be an interim proposal that we might think about that might kind of help in terms of that transition to, between where we are right now and whenever we decide to go and have public meetings, and that is to change our Zoom protocol. Right now on Zoom, we can see, I don't really see right now, but we, we can generally see who's in the audience. But the audience can't see who's in the audience. So I'm thinking maybe a possibility would be allow the audience, allow everybody to see who's attending the meeting. Same rules, stay on mute unless called upon. Everything else, no chat or anything like that, but allowing everybody to be visible so that in a way, that's almost like a public meeting. And then added to that, my own kind of interest would be to have the people that are actually asking us questions. I mean, Donna made a statement today, but it would be really nice to see Donna's face. So to be able to actually see people that are talking to us. So whenever we, we, we will go to public meetings, there's no question about that. When is the big question? And I think Jerry stated it beautifully. We just don't know right now. But that might be something that would help the community feel like they knew what was going on and they could see everybody who was participating.
A lot of complaints that I heard were centered around that. So, I mean, that's, that would be a really good interim step, it seems like, to change the Zoom protocol. And I don't know, Ms. Ammon, how difficult that is, but.
It's not hard at all. So we actually used to use what they call a Zoom meeting format, which on the backend, so basically we see what, eight. I have thirteen people, thirteen boxes on my screen right now. Right? Yeah, it's my view might be different than yours. If you go to the upper right hand, there's a little box and it says view, and you can change that. And then you can see everybody. So we moved away from the meeting format, which showed everybody. So there's thirty-four people you can see that are attending the meeting. Because there's more vulnerability from an IT perspective for people to Zoom bomb and disrupt meetings. It just happened in the Harlem recently. I won't repeat what happened because it was super inappropriate. Um, I know that our staff have had to manage some inappropriate visuals popping up during the meeting, because instead of thirteen individuals we're managing, we're managing everyone and anyone that's in the system. And people forget to turn their mute buttons off. People forget to turn their screens off. So I just want to share that. If the council decides that that's the direction they want to go, we can go back to that. We would have to figure out how to disable the chat. There was a lot of rude disruptive chat that was happening and was impacting, I think, council's ability to focus. So that was another reason that we moved to the webinar format. We tried to figure out a way around it to be able to show at least the names of the people who are participating to their participants, but Zoom's limited in that way. One thing that we could do in terms of responding to Linda's point was if we promote someone who's an attendee to a panelist, they can be visually present. Um, I think folks elect not to be. Um, so that's up to council to decide when people provide testimony, you can ask them to be visually present. And we can promote folks as panelists and then take them down, and that, that allows them to be visually present. So it's not hard. We just actually sent out a different type of format to the meeting. But it does get a little squirrely on our end.
Yeah, sounds like it. Jenna, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, I'm just going to add to Leila. We can also, I, I like the idea of Linda and just community involvement, being able to see everyone that's on participating. And we can also, with the new Zoom feature, you're able to set like your top counsel. So you can, we can program in Zoom to set all the counselors, set the city staff, set other people that are speaking, and then you know, hopefully the intruders don't pop on the very middle center of your screen. I've been in a Zoom bombed meeting and interesting.
Just hold, don't hold us responsible for it, and I'm cool. You're right. I think that is a new feature since we moved to webinar. So if we could do something like that, then that way lays a lot of my concerns.
Yeah. And then I guess I'll, I'll touch on, I, I agree with, with Jerry and Brad. I, I don't think that right now is necessarily the right time to be back in person. But I hope that we can do that, you know, in the near future. And I think it's also a nod towards a need for the cities, for a, a city hall and a city community space, so.
May I ask Jenna a question?
Of course.
Do you know if you can manage the mute button on, on people's, like, can you, can you make sure people stay muted until?
That's a little question, but yeah.
You can do that?
We, we can in a meeting format, but they can just unmute. So in this format, we actually control it, but in that format, we'd have to be kind of monitoring it, because people can then just unmute themselves again.
It sounds to me like this is one that maybe we can look at March. We've got some time between now and then to try to figure it out and, and maybe set, we have several council meetings and work sessions coming up in, in the next couple of weeks. And Ms. Ammon, if we could put this on the next work session to come up with a plan that's very specific. I'm, I'm curious what, because the Planning Commission is mentioned here, I'm curious what the chairperson there feels. I know she had some concerns about health issues and was the last I heard, I thought she said that she was hoping to stay with Zoom for the next year. There you are.
Lucky for us, she's here.
Yes. Hi Karen.
Yeah, hi, everybody.
Do you want to address this?
I would certainly defer any, you know, monetary decisions, obviously, to this council. That's, it sounds like it would be pretty expensive for the city to also do the Planning Commission meetings in person, as much as I would like to. I, I am very, I'm, I'm maybe over cautious when it comes to COVID. You know, people in my household are wouldn't survive very well if COVID came into my home. So I'm, you know, I'm one of those, you know, get away from me people. Maybe I always have been, I don't know. COVID's brought out the inner hermit, if you put it that way. So, you know, it, it sounds like if we could change the Zoom format to include everyone that might be fine, but you know, we'll do as the city directs. It's yeah, we're I think we'll be fine either way. I'll probably be attending by Zoom unless, you know, unless we're completely, you know, masked and all of that stuff.
Yeah, well, I, my husband and I both spent Christmas with COVID. Didn't, you know, didn't think it could happen, but there it was. So it, I think it is just really out there. And as Brad said, it's, it's on the rise, and Linda had the numbers. And so I would really defer to continue this conversation at a work session. Do we need to vote on that? That we can just move it along, right? Okay, we're going to move that one along. So next up is a, a presentation.
Just sorry, real quick, so I can understand what we're doing next. Is there anything of staff that is being asked, or is the council just going to come back, use the information that's been provided thus far, have a more detailed conversation at the work session in February, and then give staff direction then? So we're, okay.
Great. And then we're, we're in agreement that we will move to the meeting format versus the web, or the Zoom meeting format.
Yeah, is there consensus around that?
Yeah, I, and, and if, you know, that
We'll give it a shot. Jenna, I'm going to call you.
So with that, Jenna, would that start at the next meeting, February meeting?
We can do it in February, if Jenna comes and talks to me. And as long as none of you hold me accountable for anything that shows up that's not on the city's radar.
Okay. Um, there's a presentation from staff regarding the storm drain, the SDC methodology and recommended increase to the system development charge, but it was on the agenda. I understand that there are some issues with that proposal and that that one is actually going to be postponed.
Uh, close, yeah. So one of the things that I, I want to applaud the mayor for pushing staff to try to get a resolution prepared tonight. So that the council had the opportunity to actually adopt the new SDC. So we kind of rushed to get that done, but we're caught up in legal review right now. So I do want to give a shout out to the mayor for trying to make that happen this month. Staff had anticipated we'd do it in February, so we're on track to get the resolution. I think there's just some technical elements of the resolution. It's been thirty years since it's been updated, and we want to make sure that because we're leveraging, uh, levying fees, that we want it to be on point. So I think they're substantive enough. I wouldn't feel comfortable with council adopting the draft resolution to defer that to the February meeting. But we can get the presentation, answer any of your questions tonight, and then next month, it would be a pretty straightforward adoption process.
That's on the SDC.
Yeah, so we have our consultant here tonight, Sean Corn, to go through the staff report, be able to answer any questions that the council may have. And then if directed, staff will move to get that resolution finalized for February.
Sounds good. Uh, Sean, are you there?
I am. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I apologize for not, not being able to see my smiling face. My webcam broke and I'm waiting for IT to fix it. So I apologize for that. It's great to see all of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Uh, I have a brief presentation that essentially summarizes the report that was in, included in the staff report, although I see now I can't share. Um, if that's the case, I will be fine. Okay, I will wait. Why that's happening. Uh, what, what it is is a quick summary. I have, I think, eight slides, so really just taking some of the key pieces from the report to kind of walk you through it. And thank you. I will share my screen here. And walk you through the storm drain system development charge. I'll start off by just talking about an overview of what an SDC is. As was mentioned, this hasn't been updated for the city in a long time. So I want to walk through how we set up these fees, how we establish them, what that formula is. Take a look at the present proposed fee and then walk you through two charts, kind of show you how we do the math uh, so that you can gain an understanding or at least a feeling of how we develop these charges. Then take any questions that you all may have. So really, a system development charge is a one-time charge to new customers connecting to the system. So this is not like rates where we charge them monthly and we collect revenue. This is one time for a new customer. And the point of these charges is to reflect the value of the capacity in the existing system. So you have a system in place today. There's value to that. Existing customers have been paying for that or have paid for that. And then we have future improvements that are necessary to continue to support the stormwater system. And so there's a component of that that also needs to be built into this fee. So a system development charge essentially puts existing customers and new customers on equal footing so that they have all paid the same cost or value of that capacity that's available in the system. So it's maintaining equity between existing and new customers. And as we think about this, we think about how we funded the system, the planning criteria, and the overall costs of improvements that are necessary to fund the system. Now, as we go through this, there's a couple industry standard approaches that are outlined that we can use to develop the system development charge for the stormwater utility. One of the books is American Water Works. It's a water book, but it has a great discussion of how we develop SDCs. The other manual is, is more focused on water, wastewater, and the specific section on stormwater. And they lay out kind of how we think about the process. What's important, though, is that we follow Oregon state law. And it outlines the approach and methodology. It talks about a reimbursement fee, which is the existing system, or an improvement fee, which is the future improvements on the system that are necessary to maintain the stormwater system. And Oregon revised statutes outline a couple of sections. There's six or seven actual sections that talk you through this process. It's not a mathematically exact calculation necessarily. It's a reasonable relationship, and I'll show you why that is here in a little bit. But we developed that analysis based on the city-specific documents. So looking at your system planning criteria, your capital plan, and the needs that are being met through that capital improvement plan for the stormwater system. Now, this is not an operations and maintenance or an O and M component. This is specifically a value of capacity of the infrastructure or the funds that have spent to improve the stormwater infrastructure and, and provide that system. So that's a really specific component of establishing SDCs is focusing on that capital side of it. So the formula itself is actually really easy. It's getting the numbers together that you put in the formula that can be a bit challenging. Essentially, what we do is we take the existing plant, and that plant means existing infrastructure or facilities that are in place today. What we're allowed to do under the ORS is we're allowed to take those original costs of those infrastructure projects and bring them up to today's cost. So we use what's known as the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, and it gives us a value in each year. So we're able to take the projects from the prior years and increase them to today's value. And when we put this together, it was through October twenty-twenty-two's E and R CCI index. We divide that through by our existing and future ESUs or equivalent service units. And I'll show you how we And I'll show you how we calculate that here in a moment. We then take the future plants and we also divide through by those existing and future ESUs. So that gives us our total maximum allowable SDC. Now, that future piece is based on the adopted capital plan that we have. And our ESUs are based on the buildable land inventory. And I'll show you some of those numbers here. But ultimately, what we're calculating is that value of the existing system plus future improvements to serve existing and new customers. So that new customers pay their equitable share of those costs. Now, just a quick summary here, uh, we have a current SDC per ESU or equivalent service unit of one hundred and seventy-four dollars. That was established uh in the early nineties. It was updated in nineteen ninety-six to a hundred and seventy-four dollars. As you can see in the red box here, based on our calculation. At today, we that maximum calculated stormwater SDC is one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And that's per five thousand square uh per five thousand square foot lot. So that's our definition of an ESU in the UGB building, buildable land inventory is that five thousand square feet. Now, how we come back to that, just a little more detail, and this is also listed out in the report as part of the attachment uh to the agenda this evening, is we take the total buildable acres from the UGB buildable lands inventory. We convert that to square feet. We divide that total square footage by our lot size of five thousand square feet. And that was that minimum lot size that was outlined in the study. And that gives us our total future ESUs uh calculated here. We then calculate what our existing ESUs are. We add the eight hundred and thirty-six future to that. And we have total ESUs of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. That becomes our denominator. That's what we're dividing through. The value of our existing or reimbursement component and our future capital component by. Now, when we started looking at the ex reimbursement and improvement, then those two pieces, looking back at what infrastructure facilities were available, you see the reimbursement fee. That's that replacement cost new. So taking the existing assets and bringing them up to today's dollars, that was four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And then we looked at the improvement fee, which is the capital plan, which was just over six million dollars. So we have a total of about six and a half million dollars of capacity value in the system. We divide that through by our total ESUs of thirty-eight seventy-five point seven nine. And we come up with a calculated fee of a charge of one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine. So those assets are based on some recent assets through June of twenty twenty-two. We've taken those up through October of twenty-two based on the ENR CCI. And then we base that on those minimum lot size and the future available buildable area that is in the system. So as we go through this process, really, the the SDC provides that reasonable relationship between the impact of development and the charge that can be calculated. So our maximum calculated fee. And this update reflects the value of the capacity in the current system today based on our existing infrastructure that we identified as well as the future capital improvements. And as I've mentioned a couple of times, this is the maximum fee that may be ca that may be charged by the city. Uh, ultimately, the council can determine to charge something less, but understand that that would imply a cost sharing, right? Those new customers are not paying their equitable share of the cost. And those are being shifted to everybody else to fund those improvements. So that's one of the the assumptions as we think about this. One of the comments that can be made at times is growth pays for growth. So charging the maximum fee would imply that those new customers are paying for their share of the value in the system that we have today. And with that, I will take any questions or feedback or comments uh that you all may have that myself and staff can answer for you all.
May I just make a comment and maybe Sean can uh can address this to the public? One of the things that I was really impressed by in your report is the updating of the fee on an ongoing basis and the ultimate review of the fee in five years. I wanted to talk to the public a little bit uh about that because I think uh given where we are today, that becomes a critical, critical component of our future.
Yeah, a great question. And and I probably should have had that in my my presentation. But yes, uh, one of the recommendations that we have in our report is that the city would update this fee annually. And that would be based generally. There's other indices that we can use, but we typically rely on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. That's really focused on the construction element, concrete, wood, steel, et cetera, as part of that. And what that does is it it maintains that fee level over time. So when we think about our existing infrastructure, we bring that up to today's dollars. And so if we don't increase the fee annually, the next time you do an update, we've got a big jump in the fee. So there's a significant increase rather than a smooth adjustment. The other part of this is we have the future capital projects in there at today's value. So what the estimate is in today's dollars, as we've all learned over the last eight months, inflation has an impact on all those things. So over time, that's going to be increasing as well. So that that annual adjustment, which is allowed in the ORS as well as some of the past city uh ordinances and resolutions, gives you that ability to maintain that fee at a commensurate level with the increasing cost that everybody's experiencing for the capital projects as well as the value of that capacity today.
Perfect. Thank you, Sean.
Um, Sean, I had a question. Um, the SDCs at this point include water. If I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, water, storm drainage and parks, but not roads. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, and then that we're only talking about the storm drain today. Um, it's just that one fee that we're looking at as part of that.
Okay, so we're not going to talk about the roads uh at this time. Um, Brad, did you have any comments or questions?
You did.
You're muted. Still muted.
Uh, I'm excited to um move forward on this. I think it's uh it's time that it gets done. I agree with uh Sean and that it would be nice to um have these uh processes updated annually so that um there's not a lot of surprises for people.
Right, exactly. Um, Jerry?
Yeah, I I just want to follow up on uh what Linda talked about, I guess, uh Brad as well. I may have read it incorrectly, but it seemed to me that the current uh city ordinance on uh system development fees anticipates that the council will make that adjustment every January. And uh those adjustments were not made. Uh, and that's, I think, what accounts for the big jump from the existing uh fee to what is being proposed. I absolutely favor that increase, but I can understand how it's going to look like sticker shock to some folks. So I guess I have two questions. One, um if it's not too much work, and maybe it is, but I think it would be good to see what the uh the actual number would be had yearly adjustments been made. Uh, because that will, I think, clarify that this is not as large a jump as uh it may appear. Uh, but then the other thing is um it seems that uh an annual adjustment based on inflation is a an administrative uh function that probably shouldn't require council action. Or if it could be done without council action, uh it may be done more successfully than has been the case. So uh if we can do it uh at the city administration level, I think, I think we want to consider that. I I understand it would take a a change in the ordinance, but not a large one. Um, so anyway, I I'm very much in favor, as Brad said, I think the time is upon us. I think the report is outstanding and I I'm anxious to uh up the number. But I would like to better understand what the true increase is had we done the inflation adjustments. And I would like to make sure we don't fall into that trap again. So if we can fix that and make it more automatic, um perhaps we can't under Oregon law. Maybe we need to have council approval, but year from now, we have to do a better job.
Okay, so are you asking Sean to provide that true increase?
Well, I mean, I I'm asking anybody who's involved with it, who has the ability to do it, if it can be done quickly. I don't want to put anybody to a lot of work. Uh, but if it's a, if you can hit a couple of keystrokes on a on a computer and figure it out, that'd be great. If you can't, I think we can just assume that uh the reason for the large gap is in part uh on our uh failure to have done it in the past on an annual basis.
Okay.
And it is, it's about Madam Mayor, if I can, uh to answer that question at least. It it's about five hundred dollar, it goes up to about five hundred dollars uh from the hundred and seventy-four based on the nineteen ninety-six E and R to the October twenty twenty-two. But again, not knowing the specific basis of what made up that original hundred and seventy-four dollars makes it a little challenging because that may not be exactly accurate. Yeah, so so but that would be it. I think the, just to kind of add to that, your to your question is a big part of that is the future capital needs on the storm drain system. That's really the key driver right now.
That makes you feel a little better then, but I think I think we should still make it as easy as, I think it should be a default. I mean, it should happen unless.
Right, right. And and a communication plan should go along with the additional. I mean, I think, looking at it logically, I mean, it just, it makes all the sense in the world. I mean, we haven't done it for thirty years and there's a lot that's changed in that. But making sure we communicate it to the developers in the community, I think, is critical.
That is really critical. Um, uh Jenna, do you have something to add?
Um, I have actually a handful of questions. Um, can, so this is based on the minimum lot size of uh five thousand square feet. Does that, so that would be the seventeen hundred, roughly seventeen hundred dollar charge. Um, would that double for a ten thousand square foot, a double lot or increase?
Yeah, so so generally, oh, sorry, go ahead and finish.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, uh, yeah, so so to calculate an ESU or equivalent service unit, you would divide that square footage by the five thousand.
Okay.
And so if it were ten thousand, you're two ESUs, so you're paying two of those. Seventeen hundred.
Perfect. Um, and then another question, does this apply to additions or remodels? So do you, if you have a tiny cottage, one bedroom, one bath cottage and you are going to build a a addition that has three more bathrooms, the, will you pay an SDC for that in increase?
I would say generally not. There may be exceptions to that rule. Um, and that that's probably more of a legal question that I don't want to uh pontificate on too much this evening. But there are exceptions to that that can happen. Like on water and sewer, it's really easy because somebody may go from a three-quarter inch meter to a one-inch meter. We've got something quantifiable. On the storm drain side, it's a lot more challenging because it's somewhat of a you know, with on a total lot square footage size. Um, so as an example, if it were on an impervious area, square footage size, we could actually calculate or quantify that change. And then, yes, there would be an additional incremental charge to that. But the way we have it set up here now, uh, it's going to be more of the exception than any rule, I believe.
Okay, um, and then this is, next question is probably more for city staff um or in the resolution. And I I am one hundred percent for passing this, um, and I don't want to delay it whatsoever. Um, what I would like to see is there is some vague language in the resolution um and report about either waived or reduced fees for housing, for affordable workforce. Um, and I would want to include ADUs in that. Um, I I would like be before, when when we hit this again in February, um, ask about, ask staff to research and add some clarity to what we can add. Maybe not right now to the resolution, but down the road to include some some waves and um reduce fees for for workforce, affordable and need you housing.
Yeah, that that's something that um, so in the ordinance, the ordinance that allows us to levy SDCs, there is a provision in there that does allow the city to exempt affordable housing. Um, this could be something, so I wanted to get to two things. Uh, Council Spengman brought up. Um, is this possibly an administrative thing we can do to update to inflation? So I'll check with legal on that. And if so, we can include it as a recital in the resolution. And then that gives staff the policy direction to do those updates. My long-term goal is to get us of what we call sort of a master fee schedule. And then the master fee schedule gets updated on an annual basis for which the somehow the budget committee or the council is involved in that. So that's kind of a little longer term planning, but I'll look into that and see how we can do it. Um, and then if not, we can just always add it to the council agenda on an annual basis. So we know we're doing it. So the second point uh for Council Edgington, so I I will also check with uh legal and see how we could uh potentially structure it in the resolution now, if there's consensus from the council. Um, the other option is, as you suggest, which is to say, pass this resolution and then have this be a policy discussion for you all to um work through in the coming months. So I'll defer to you, council, on direction on that. But we could do it probably next month if there was consensus.
Any other final comments or questions?
I saw that Dan had his hand up. Dan, did you have something to say?
Uh, it was based on the the cut question to uh Council segment about about increasing it. There is a caveat in our ninety-one four dash ordinance, which is the SDC. But I would highly recommend that uh it be at least checked by legal again since ninety-one has been some time ago. But I can also, I can also uh really reassert here that one of the things that Leila has been very adamant about is getting all of our fee structures like this on that concept of once a year, they get the increase. So that's been one of the things that's been pushed to me to make sure I'm following, you know, and setting up. So just wanted to make sure that was well-known.
Yeah, that's that, sounds like that's the way we need to go.
Mayor Simmons, may I ask, um, I think Leila just indicated that we could have more specific language toward affordable housing. Come to consensus if there's a possibility of doing that.
You can call me Lynn, uh, Tab. You know, it's one syllable, like it's my attention real fast. Okay, so it sounds like in recap that we're going to be looking at um the vague wording that uh regarding the ADUs and the workforce housing and the affordable housing. And um eventually down the road, move this towards something that can be an administrative piece. Do I have that correct? Lay uh, Miss Simon, is that?
You can call me Leila. Call me Al. Let's just get this. Um, yeah, so what I heard is that um we would like to to find out, clarify from legal counsel if the annual update can be done administratively. And second, um, I guess I do not clear on where we're headed with the affordable housing. If we're going to, if council wants to discuss that now and have that be incorporated into the draft that I hope to bring back in February, or defer that to future discussion.
And I would say if you think you have time to include that for the resolution, I am a yes.
I I do. I just would love to get some more clarity because affordable housing can mean a lot of things to a lot of people. And so that's where um, that's where I'm going to look to you all to tell me what that is. Are we talking a hundred percent waiver up to a hundred twenty percent of AMI? Are we talking fifty percent from eighty to a hundred twenty? Like, you know, do you feel prepared to kind of go through the nuance of that? Um, or do you feel like you have general direction that, you know, you want us to work with now?
I don't know if I have, sorry, I don't know if I have the direction right now of what those way, those fees should be waived to. So I guess maybe I would like to have some recommendations come back at the the next meeting we can add.
Okay. Um, so what I can do is work with legal counsel to address the first question. Um, so what I can do is work with legal counsel to address the first question. And then if I can't, then we will establish a process move forward, moving forward that may include council to make sure that those are updated annually. Uh, I will do what I can between now and February on getting some recommendations. Um, I'd like to um, talk with our budget um, diversification folks. They might have some um, guidance on that. Uh, it won't be prepared in time if you want to adopt a resolution in February. So I guess my recommendation to council would be, uh, if you want to adopt these SDCs and we can start levying them now, uh, we aim to have that resolution prepared and completed by February for your approval. And then um, we'll continue the conversation around affordable housing, either at the next council meeting, or it may need to be in the following meeting, depending on how quickly we can get those answers.
Can I just ask, are there any pending um, affordable housing or workforce housing development projects that would be impacted uh, by a resolution uh, passed in February that did not include this waiver?
I don't believe so, but I would say that this is a matter that I'm, my guts telling me will be before the planning commission council this year at some point. Um, not this first quarter and not the first half.
Because it, it sounds like we definitely have consensus to, to move forward and to include uh, language that Jenna is suggesting, but um, kind of relying on you, I think, to bring us uh, hard numbers or hard language, I should say, maybe as set of options uh, to plug in. Uh, and so I guess I would, I would love to see us be able to adopt the resolution at the earliest opportunity. And if we have to come back, a council meeting later and add language, that, that would, I think that would.
Yeah, I agree enough.
And in regard to the other issue, I, I um, I, I, obviously, I think you need to talk to council, but my own, uh, legal counsel, but my understanding is, is that, uh, my, my thought is that if we can, if they say go, we can do it administratively, we, we will have to uh, amend the ordinance. The ordinance says what it says.
Yeah, it sure does.
Yeah, but, but it doesn't feel like it would be a particularly big lift to change it if it's lawful, so.
Right.
Uh, Jerry, Jerry, how long does it take to change that ordinance? Yeah, I'm a newbie here.
Yeah, well, we would have, I mean, because it would be, uh, I think, a, a very surgical fix on an existing ordinance, I think we could have a first reading uh, prepared as soon as we know the
Why don't we ask Leila?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, like, the process itself, so as Counsel Spengman was saying, once it's, uh, once we have the language and it's approved, and I assume this will be surgical, I want to confirm that because sometimes these things have threads that feed into other things. But saying it's surgical, it's about ninety days. Um, we closer to actually a hundred and twenty, because we have to post it two weeks in advance of the first reading. There's the first reading, assuming that's approved. It moves to a second reading and then it goes into effect thirty days after it's adopted. So that's, that's how long an ordinance takes to change. We wouldn't be changing this until next January anyway. So I think we'll be fine.
Yeah. Not until next January, they wouldn't go into effect?
Oh, pardon me, no, the SDC would go into effect immediately.
Okay.
The change to the ordinance, uh, the update for next year wouldn't happen till February, if we adopt it in February. So I'm saying that we have a year to change the ordinance.
I see, okay, okay. Um, next up is, um, I don't know where Dan went. Did we lose him?
Oh, he's here.
Hi, Dan. Thank you very much for, Sean, I wanted to thank you too. That was a um, a, an excellent report and, and we've got a lot of information here to move ahead with, so appreciate your help. Um, Dan, before we start, thank you. I have to say, that was a Herculean effort last week when we were all out of power and trees were all over the place. And um, I thought you only had a couple of people um, in your department, but I just, I just saw your um, crews everywhere. So particular thanks to Jason and Jeremy and um, Josh, and I know, you know, Lori puts in a lot of extra time and you probably didn't go home there for a couple of days. Uh, but, you know, thank you so much for keeping us warm and bringing us light and um, all of those things. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you. I can't, I can't say I brought you light. I bring you water.
Okay, so um, you're going to talk about the um, uh, Dorcas, good old Dorcas.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Dorcas Lane, um, we're going to essentially, we're coming today to ask that the, the city manager uh, have the ability to um, contract with the contractor and delegate authority to the city manager. So essentially, the project went out to bid and it came in higher than the bid than what we had budgeted. So we were good in two of the lines, but specifically the storm ran over. So to be able to get us back to where we need to be, essentially, we're having to do a little bit of value engineering. So we're having to essentially cut some of the project down in size. Now, what does that mean? Well, water, which is, a lot of it is asbestos concrete, piping in this project is going to be completely still done. We're not, we're not cutting there because we're good there. Where we are looking at as part of an option is essentially is cutting out the work that would have been down South Fourth Street a little bit. So that's what we're looking at. Now, we don't have that set in stone yet. So what we're asking for though is to keep the project moving forward is that delegation of authority. And there's, we can't, until we have a signed contract with the contractor, we can't do any contract negotiations. So part of that delegation of authority um, also limits the amount, which is the budgeted amount of money that we do have to spend on the project. So, um, as you guys know, we've been working this project for quite some time.
Right.
This project would, if we do, do move forward with the direction we're moving, like you said, it would cut out South Fourth Street. It would also cut out the intersection of Classic, but we still can tie on to the existing storm system that's in that intersection. This really does, though, help set the stage for the future as far as what's going to happen with Classic Street. And as, as we move along, you know, uh, Leila has been helping us, you know, move the CIP project idea and actually build us an actual city CIP plan. And this allows us the form of doing that. So it might also later on include a second phase if we decide to come back and redo that out of next year's budget, some of the areas that were left out. So it does allow us some essentially adjustability to the project. So, and that's, right now is hinging on a few things. We might end up uh, having to come back later and saying things didn't work out and we had to cancel the contract. So hopefully, we don't have to go there, but that is one of the options there, and that's essentially some of the guidance we're looking for from you guys. You know, the council can decide that we don't want to do anything with it right now and we'll wait for money. Um, but it's going to take money to get there. So staff's recommendation is, of course, once again, is to move kind of forward with, with this, this plan. Kyle Ayers is also on the line, so he can answer some of the questions. They have redesigned it a little bit, not a lot, just helped with the value engineering that was also included in the package.
Dan, can you speak a little more to what value and, value engineering is? For those who are kind of new to construction?
Yeah, there's a couple of acronyms you threw out there, Dan, so VE and CIP. You guys will know all this stuff in no time, but value engineering is, it's an effort on a construction project to just start to remove things to get the most value out of the project that you can. So you start ticking things off that um, were originally included in the scope that are not essential or can be replaced, say, with a different type of um, one system can be moved to another system or something like that. So it's a way of saying, here's how much money we have to spend. Here's a design we have. How do we try to make these two things meet? So it's VE, we get into City Hall, we hear in that term a lot. Um, CIP is the Capital Improvement Plan, so I wanted to make sure we spelled that out, both for folks here and for the public. So that's, that's a strategic five-year usually plan for capital improvements. Uh, the city doesn't have one. Um, in fact, Dan and I have been working together to establish, I think, the city's first major projects list. Um, that list will inform uh, the capital improvement plan and, and council actually be quite involved in prioritizing those capital projects uh, for funding. So the CIP kind of spells out what the project is, what the timeline is, and how that plan is budgeted for. And then I think Kyle's now here with us. And so for those that don't know Kyle, um, Kyle used to be with OTAC. He is the project engineer on, um, he has his own firm here now on the North Coast, North Course Civil Design. Kyle is the project engineer on Dorcas, but he is also the city's contract city engineer. So we go to Kyle a lot with questions. Does that catch your question?
That's it. Thank you for that introduction. I appreciate it.
Um, Kyle, I'm, um, I'm kind of new at this, so, um, and I live not too far from Dorcas. It sounds like where things are going to be cut off after Fourth Street. Um, is this um, going to look any different from the original proposal? Um, in other words, is the street uh, going to include a widening or pathways for bikes or is this strictly the uh, pipes?
So the uh, scope of the overall project will be shrunken slightly. Uh, as Dan said, it won't continue down fourth. So, no, it won't um, have anything different or new components to it. We're still uh, looking at the value engineering and utilizing the existing bid list to just, again, just shrink down and uh, cut some costs where we feel uh, we can phase the project in the future. So it's still going to be a twenty-foot wide road with valley gutter uh, on the south side. We will still have the concrete gutters that radius in the intersections with catch basins that connect to a storm main that take the storm water from Classic Street and divert it down or, or, or transport it down Dorcas and then eventually into the Third Street Storm System.
Okay.
So, um, we've come up a way uh, that we feel that we can uh, have Dorcas as the first phase, and then in the future, we can have Fourth Street, South Fourth uh, as a second phase. Uh, and we can still make that connection to the Third Street Storm System, allowing um, the, the, the storm water to be transported where it's supposed to and get out of the situation that the city is in with their storm water uh, on Classic.
Can I ask when you would start work?
If this is authorized.
Authorized tonight?
Yes, if this is authorized tonight, we will go ahead and uh, issue the notice of award to the contractor tomorrow. He then has thirty days to get his insurance bonds and um, submittals over to the city, over to me, and uh, then he can start construction immediately after that. So he has not, uh, he being Ryan Van de Koevering of Advanced Excavation. He's a local uh, contractor and uh, he has not bid on any other projects. So he is uh, hungrily just sitting and waiting and hoping that he can get started on this as soon as possible. Um, but he did say, you know, if, if things do continue to uh, you know, have to make decisions and, and drag on, then he probably would not be able to with, or uphold his bid for much longer.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So he'd asked that uh, either we commit and uh, and get the contract rolling or cancel all bids. And once the city decides on a new plan, uh, then he would bid on the project again.
How long will the um, construction take?
We haven't slated for um, the, let's see, with our original proposal, we've had construction starting right now and ending at the end of June. Now.
About six months, you think?
Correct.
Okay.
And so we will likely have to extend that, um, you know, for this additional time that it's taken.
Okay. Um, Jenna, do you have some discussion or thoughts on um, this uh, awarding this contract with advanced excavation?
Yeah, I, I think we should move forward and allow Leila to approve.
Okay, uh, Linda?
Well, we've worked with Advance before and they are an exceptional group, and so I would hate to lose them. So I, Jenna, I think we need to move forward now.
Okay, Jerry?
I certainly agree. I, I do have two questions more for clarification. I'm just curious, uh, with the value engineering, because we do hear that term a lot, uh, with the other project, the City Hall project. So I want to make sure I understand is, is the contractor involved in those discussions at this point, or you, you guys do the value engineering and then tell the contractor after he's on a contract what you've decided?
Well, we started first with uh, Dan, Leila and I um, scratching our head and kind of pulling out our hair a little bit, just trying to make this work within uh, the budget. And um, once we came up with a plan, um, we redrafted it and reran the quantities and came up with our costs based on the contractor's submitted bid. Uh, we then presented that to Ryan, um, and he said, that looks great. He goes, I'm, I have no problem with that. Um, he obviously didn't want to do something that would drastically change uh, his productivity or his ability to be able to, you know, um, uh, give the city the project that he, that they can. So um, you know, uh, there were a couple of other options and, and he said, you know, he was definitely uh, opinionated on, no, let's not, you know, just install the storm and patch everything back, you know, because again, it's, he wants to provide a, a good quality product for the city. So yes, he has been involved with uh, discussions.
And then my other question is, uh, just briefly, uh, it, it feels like maybe the bids were a little surprisingly high. They came in higher uh, than we were hoping for. Um, is there any single reason for that? Anything we can point to? I know that there's been issues, obviously, with inflation in certain sectors and certain products, but is there any particular reason why we were surprised to have uh, the numbers that came in?
Well, we looked at this uh, pretty extensively, Dan and I did, and um, it's PVC pipe. PVC pipe is a, is a wild ride trying to anticipate those costs at this point. Um, of course, anything with PVC, like I mentioned before, is tied to uh, you know, the oil uh, reserves and, and oil costs. So uh, you know, if you see gasoline going up, you're going to see PVC pipe going up and, and everything else, all, all other costs. So this was just a matter of, we didn't know how high things were going to get. And um, and the storm pipe was particularly expensive. And unfortunately, that was the smallest budget that we had to work with. So, you know, then this kind of plays into what was just presented to the city about the need for the storm SDC. It had that been in place, most likely, we would be just, you know, performing the construction and the total contract without any issues. So just something to think about.
I, I tip my hat to whoever put the uh, agenda together in that particular sequence. All right, well, thank you. I'm with the crew. I'm ready to vote.
Brad?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the work um, that the previous council has done on this project and uh, and the staff. And I am in agreement to move forward as well.
Okay, so what I need is a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with advanced excavation in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred and sixty thousand uh, and three hundred and seventy dollars. Is that correct? Is there a motion?
I will so move.
Okay, Jerry, so move. Is there a second? Thank you, Linda. Okay, so we have the motion to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with advanced excavation. Um, and Kyle, thank you very much for your um, your nice presentation and answering our questions and let's get going on this. Those folks on Dorcas don't need to be flooded anymore. You take care of those people.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Mayor, did you finish the vote, just to, for good measure?
Oh.
Making sure, no problem.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, it's, so it is passed. Thank you.
The record thanks you.
The record thanks me. Dan, I was, you're gone now. You probably went home.
No, he stays for all these.
Oh, yeah, I, I, you know, I was thinking we should have moved you like first on the agenda so you could finally get home, because I know you've had a really, really long day. Um, I um, I just want to take like two or three minutes to I, I just want to take like two or three minutes to kind of find out from you. This is one project, but I had the chance to read your water resiliency report. And actually, you know, ran off some copies because I, I, I think this was done in 2018 and it was done by Burger Abram.
Yep.
And it essentially was grant money, as I understand it, right? And it.
Yeah, I, that I had wrote a grant for, along with the help with actually with Burger Abram on there. And it was called the Oregon Sustain. So it's a SIP grant is what it is. And so essentially what they're after is creating sustainable infrastructure.
Right, okay. There's a, in the back on page 16 and 17, there are recommended improvements. And those recommended improvements are rated at high, medium, and low. Do you know where I'm talking about? Things that need to happen to our water system to keep people safe and make sure we?
Yeah, I, you're getting out a little bit, so I'm making sure I'm catching all what you're saying.
Okay.
So.
When I add it all those up, the high risk improvements, in other words, the ones that we need to address relatively quickly, come in at over $3,881,000. Yeah. And then the medium risks are $1,625,000. And the low risks are $800,000. So we've got over $6 million here that needs, needs to happen for our water system. Is that accurate?
So these are upgrades, yes, to make us a resilient water system. And so these things essentially really create a really hardening of the system. So that's why the, essentially they're listed in there as, as goals for this to get to.
So are these goals in here, are they incorporated into this 10-year plan that you're working on?
So we're working on the CIP, which is, you heard Leila speaking of. That would be stuff that is going to be included in the CIP plan. So it will come back to council to help set, you know, what of these priorities do we want to see done first? You know, in the direction of which way we want to go. And that's why we do these kind of these, get these reports like this is to really help kind of start to focus a broad area down to really what do we need to do and such. It doesn't get into the details. So these are pretty generalized numbers. So as the council, you know, makes some of the choices in the future of this is what we want to see done as part of that program, then those become, start going into more of a planning phase and more number, realistic numbers are focused in on.
Okay, there's a reservoir three, the one up by you that holds 1.6 million gallons of water is, is the one where they comment about it possibly bringing a life safety risk to residents who live near the toe of that slope. We talked about that a little bit a while back. It isn't the reservoir necessarily that is the issue. It's the base that's sitting on, is my understanding?
Yes, yeah.
So if there's a, I mean, if there's a tsunami inundation, that's one thing. But we're, we seem to be getting more torrential rains that, that, you know, coming at us with climate change and all of that. Would substantial downpours create a life risk?
No, the, the risk that's involved with reservoir three is essentially the shaking of the ground that would cause sand to create a kind of a liquefaction on the side. You have a lot of weight sitting on a sand shelf, essentially what that is. So that creates the ability for the reservoir to essentially start traveling. And when you start moving that much weight, you end up with, with an issue of it essentially toppling over and flooding.
Okay, yeah, that's a lot of water coming down that hill, isn't it? This $6 million figure four years ago, what do you think that would be now if given?
So the city is now concluding the grant that we just completed. And essentially that grant's looked at, you know, more detail, this more focusing in. And because this was a high priority project. So to recap for some of the new council, myself, Dan Johnson with HGR, we looked at working on getting a grant. We got a grant from Federal Emergency Management for $100,000, $75,000 paid by the Fed. It focused in on the plan and it, it listed a few options. And then said, this was the best core of action, which is actually to replace all three of our reservoirs at a price tag of roughly $12 million. Now, with that being said, those are once again rough numbers. We need to continue further getting involved into the project to know more about it. So the next step is essentially taking us to 30% engineering. And 30% engineering then helps really highlight what we are looking at. And so part of that 30% will be doing geotechnical more on the area to make sure it is a viable area to actually construct the reservoir. So that is.
Jenna?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I, this is really good information and important information that I'd love to discuss more. But it wasn't on our agenda and I am not prepared to have this discussion. I really hope that we can have this in our goal setting and in future council meetings.
Okay, I think that's why I brought it up and I did give Dan a sort of a heads up because we are heading into a goal session on Friday. And there wasn't a lot of time to, you know, go through it all. But I, I, I thought it is certainly pertinent information. And certainly when we go into writing goals, we need to know that there's a lot of money that needs to go into that direction. So I will thank, any other questions for Dan? Okay, so Dan, thank you very, very much for your time. And we'll let you go home.
I'll still be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
So there is a next approval resolution, appointing Brad Berman, Mark Kessner, and Frank Squillo to the Planning Commission. Karen, did you have something to say about this?
Um, yes, I do. Thank you. I just wanted to run through kind of briefly where we are, what led to the resolution that we're requesting for tonight. We had two resignations from the Planning Commission. I should, let me back that up. We had one, Jenna joined council and left two years of her term on the Planning Commission open. And then we had two commissioners whose terms expired in December not reapply for their positions. So that left us with three vacancies on a seven-person panel. And so we obviously needed to fix that. So we came to the council in November to request that the criteria for selection of the new candidate, of the new Planning Commission members be approved and to establish a committee to interview and vet the commissioners. And the idea was that we would bring you a slate. And we've done that today. I want to go back a little bit to August where the council agreed to process for making appointments and that included the creation of a selection committee for each appointment. And that and also required that the criteria be established and that the council understood and approved the criteria for each of those selections. So that was, that process was set in place back in August and then we brought it forward in November so that we could get some new Planning Commission members so that our, our work for 2023 isn't delayed by not having a full panel. The selection committee that the council approved in November included Counselor Jenna Edgerton, myself and Leila Almond, city manager, as the selection committee. We developed criteria for the selection process and that criteria was proposed and approved by the council, as I said. The criteria that the council approved were fairly simple, but kind of hard to quantify. The first is that we're looking for a balanced group of people that represent people who live or own property in Manzanita. We're looking for people that have read the comprehensive plan and have a general understanding of land use matters. We're looking for people who could be objective and weigh complex issues and who would be able to rely on the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance for decision-making, especially if it's a decision that they personally are not in favor of. And then we also were looking for people who would have limited, if any, conflicts of interest going forward. So the applications were posted on November 18th. They were open for three weeks. The application deadline was December 9th at 5:00 PM and at that point we had 10 applications. It was a pretty broad group of people. It's a lot of different experiences. Each of the members of the selection committee independently reviewed the applications. And then we met and achieved a consensus on which five we thought should be brought forward for interviews. We then held those interviews on a very long day, on December 15th. And after those interviews, we achieved consensus on which three of the five of the 10 that we thought should be brought forward. And those three, I just want to speak just really briefly to, the first was Mark Kessner. We're recommending that the council approve a four-year appointment for Mark. He's a full-time resident of Manzanita and is very interested in all of the city matters. He's been a participant in all of the Manzanita listens and the city, city hall, town hall meetings. He understands pretty thoroughly the challenges that the Planning Commission has in front of us. And our selection committee was impressed by his approach to how he would resolve a sticky, sticky land use issues. We were very impressed with that. Brad Berman is a part-time resident of Manzanita. But he comes with extensive experience in property development. He's still working in Portland. But he's been on the other side of the Planning Commission in many, many different jurisdictions. And he really understands the importance of community buy-in before any changes in a community are affected. And we expect him to be a real consensus builder on the commission. We're recommending Brad for a four-year appointment as well. Frank Squillo, we're recommending to fulfill the two-year remaining opening. He is a full-time resident, but he lives in the urban growth boundary. So he brings a little tiny different perspective to the commission from that. He's also a current business owner. His business is in the Halum, so we don't expect any conflicts with any applications that he might be bringing in. Frank is very cognizant of the fact that the city is changing and he wants to ensure that that change comes with balance and the scale of the city is preserved in any new development. We're really hoping that the council will approve this slate of candidates. I understand that we are hoping to have some land use training. I don't know if Leila has those scheduled yet, but we were hoping to have those, I believe, in January and early February. We would love to have our slate onboard before our first meeting in February. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I have a statement here to read and have to bear with me here for a minute or two. One thing I've learned this past few months is that the Planning Commission is one of our most powerful governing bodies in the city. They help determine where our city is going and what it's going to look like in the future. Two of these positions are four-year terms, as you mentioned, one is a two-year term. It's a huge commitment, especially with the anticipated work on the updating of the comprehensive plan over which this group of volunteers will help formulate. I know there was a process in putting forth this slate and I understand the reasons the council made this move. However, because I wasn't sworn in, I had the luxury of talking with several other counselors over the past few days and feel that the revisiting of the process accommodates a range of thinking on what is the best way forward. Given that the charter gives the mayor the final say and given that this is the first time this process has been used and given that we are about to do another round of selections for the Budget Committee, it makes sense to get all of our concerns addressed now, as long as we can do it expeditiously. We thank Counselor Edgerton, Chairperson Yurka, and Ms. Amman for the hours and the energy they put in on this. It's not an easy thing. And I also want to thank all of those folks who applied. We had 10 applicants, five of whom were interviewed. And I was struck as I read through each application by the depth of knowledge and the technical expertise that was in those applications. I was also struck by the deep love of our community that came through. Having 10 people spend their time to volunteer themselves is almost unheard of and probably a first in Manzanita. So to each and every one of you, I want to offer thanks from the community. Thank you for stepping up. I am, however, going to ask the community's understanding and patience as I put this on hold and move it to the next council work session. We are entrusted by you citizens to get this right. We are a relatively new council coming together for our first council meeting and we need more time. I realize this leaves the Planning Commission with only four members at their January meeting. But if everyone stays healthy, they still have a quorum. And it's my goal to provide a slate at the February council meeting. So if you, if you have been notified one way or the other, please disregard that notice and know that we will reevaluate the process and the council members will go through an agreed-upon approach that will be transparent in a work session. It's a daunting thing to watch my, to see my name on a resolution and then signing any resolution. I have to be true to my heart. I also have to know that I'm choosing the best path that represents the majority of our citizens. So going to ask you, Brad, to weigh in on this? Comments?
Sure. I think that being the first time this process has been used, we have have found some difficulties in, in some of the wording. And I, I think that the community has expressed to me concern about transparency. Once again, I'm not privy to who the candidates, other candidates were or what their qualifications were. I just know that I was given three names and told that those were the, the candidates. And I think defining the selection process better and probably understanding the definitions and the, the criteria would be beneficial.
But could I make a comment? Two, two comments, actually. A very similar process was put in place. I believe Counselor Spigman was elevated to the council as a result of a vacancy. And Jenna Edgerton was also promoted to council using this same selection criteria. So it's not the first time it's been used. Secondly, we have a representative government. And the selection committee was given the direction to represent the council in its selection process. We did that faithfully and I find it unsettling that the work of last year is just being unwound. And that's a personal opinion. Take it however you would like it. But I find it unsettling that. that I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just wondering what else is, what else is going to be unwound going forward. And with that, I will leave my comments.
Jerry?
Yeah, so I have a few thoughts. First, I just want to remind folks that a year ago this time, the process for a mayor appointing people to a committee was that the mayor picked those people and appointed them. In the last year, in large part because Mike Scott was willing to listen to concerns on council about that process. The last council did develop a process which became part of council rules in July. And that process was followed in this case. Having said that, the bottom line is the charter gives the mayor the ultimate opportunity to appoint members of committees, even if we design a process that is is, is designed to provide more input from other people and to give that mayor a broader array of input so that the mayor is able to make appointments other than just by his or her own discretion, but with the input from a process that involves well, several folks along the way. And it's kind of a three-step process. First, the council, excuse me, first the mayor appoints a council representative to the selection committee. Then the selection committee is comprised of a member of the committee in question and the city manager or her designate. Then that group comes up with selection criteria, which they come back to council to get approved. And then they post the vacancies, resumes come in, resumes are reviewed, interviews are held. The criteria guides the interview process. So essentially, I would have to argue that we've done a lot and we've come a long way in twelve months. However, I completely understand a new mayor faced with her first set of appointments and using a essentially new process. I, I, this is a new process, Karen. It's not, it's not the process that was used to seat Jenna. And I was not appointed to council, but you're right, there, there were prior appointments to council and a different process was used. This process that we're talking about tonight is brand new. This is its maiden voyage. I personally respect the process. I think it was properly utilized. But I'm not the mayor and the mayor does get the final choice and I respect her right to, to get council together in a workshop and figure out if this current process is workable for her. She's the one who is going to have to deal with the products of this process going forward. My concern, my biggest concern is that we do it expeditiously. I think if we can have this conversation as early as next week and stay on task, I think we can get through this circumstance in short order. So that's, that's, that's what I would hope for.
Jenna, did you have come?
Yes, I, I am personally disappointed by this decision. I, I understand. I feel like the resolution that was passed in July by the previous council, they spent several months. And it was, the conversation started as a result of transparency. They moved through those meetings, adopted a new process. I believe this process was used at the tail end of the short-term rental committee with the last three appointments with no objections. And I we follow the process and I would like to see all of the work that the previous council did come to fruition. I also don't want to delay the planning commission.
I agree.
We certainly have some major items coming up.
That's right.
And likewise, the budget committee, I hope this decision does not impact moving forward as we have a budget coming up and hope to have a full slate for that meeting.
Linda?
Well, I, I have several thoughts about this. The, the first thought is I am so excited by the interest in this position. I, as you all know, I've been around for a long time and I can remember where we were begging people to be on the planning commission. It was difficult and the thought that we had ten excellent candidates that, that applied to this, I think is, is just really incredible. Secondly, I think the city of Manzanita has grown up a lot since the charter was put together. And I think coming up with a professional process was something that we really worked hard to do. Now, granted, granted, it is the first time we've done this process. And the process, anytime you create a new process, you often find flaws in that process and, and tweaks that you need. You don't throw the process out, but you, you change the process so that it more clearly meets the objectives, the objectives of the city. And I would be all for that. I think taking this process to a workshop, going over it, looking at what we did, saying, well, this kind of work, but let's see if we can't make this better. I would strongly support that.
Okay.
Please.
I'm sorry.
Particularly around the process of transparency. I mean, that's what I heard from, from the people that responded, and I thought that was a very good point. Interviewing is an incredibly important part of the selection process. As I think you all know, half of my life has been spent interviewing and I interviewed a lot for business. And this is different than business, but my, I can, I can really confidently say that about forty percent of a hiring decision comes out of resume. About sixty percent comes out of the interview. And in the interview, you're looking at the, the objectives, the, the, the characteristics of the, of the interview. You ask them difficult questions. You, you evaluate how they looked at the comprehensive plan. I mean, you really go into detail about their thoughts. And that allows you to come up with, out of ten great candidates, it really allows you to come up with the three that are most important. And I think that's a critical component. I have a high level of respect for the interview team. I have worked with Karen Yurka for years and there is nobody more dedicated to doing the right thing than Karen. Jenna was a key member of the planning commission. She was a key force in the loss discussion. She truly understands what's important about a, a planning commissioner and what it takes to be a good planning commissioner. I don't think we could have had a better interview team. I believe in the interview team. I support their decision. And I look forward to moving forward with the process. I understand that it's the mayor and the mayor's decision and that my opinion doesn't matter, but I have to say I'm really disappointed.
The Oregon Mayors Association had some issues with the process. And I think strong enough issues that we as a council need to revisit the process. The process, pardon?
Terrific. I think that's
Okay. Okay, the, you know, the process is in place. I was very excited at the time as a citizen when I found out that it wasn't going to be just taking appointments, however, work well. And this one had issues that, that too many others in the Oregon Mayors Association thought were concerning. So for that reason, and because we are a relatively new council and I'm a new mayor, and, and this is a hugely important decision. These are four-year terms and a two-year term. This is the group that's going to take on all of those challenges going forward with the comprehensive plan update. We look around and see things that are happening in our city and, and some people are happy and some aren't, but a lot of it, you know, goes through the planning commission first. So I'm going to ask patients again. I would hope that Leila would put it on the next, the very next work session, which I think is next week, and make that a high priority so that we can get through this and get a slate of candidates before the council on, at the February council meeting. The other piece that would be involved is to move perhaps the training on January twenty-eighth back to February so that all the new council, uh, planning commissioners could be in attendance. I Yes.
May, may I ask, are there specific items in the process that or what are the specific items in the process that you disagree with?
The Oregon Mayors Association found issue with a, with a couple of things. One was a, the chairman of the planning commission of having a role in appointing three people for those positions. Most of the charters in Oregon have the mayor making the appointment, partly because they don't want chair people selecting who's going to be on their committee or their commission. So that was, that was a big one. There were a couple of others. Do you want me to keep going?
Yes, that's easy.
I, I, I think partly, Jen, I'll just put it out there, is that you were a, a part of the select committee and campaigned for one of the applicants that was in the pool. So the, the third piece was that on the select committee, there was the, the city manager, which I was told has has administrative assistance that can go to a committee but is not recommended to be offering opinions when making decisions going forward. So those were, those were the three primary points that were an issue.
So you don't approve of the selection committee?
I think there has to be, I think the counselors have to be more involved. I, I understand Brad's position perfectly. Am I supposed to look at these three names and just say yes? I think when you have a pool of ten and you have a really, really powerful commission that it, it, we need to put the, the best of the pool forward. So if Brad's going to vote for it, or Jerry's going to vote for it, or Linda, or you, you should actually have access to all twelve before you make that decision. Ideally, I'd like to see you each go through all ten candidates and rank them and see where we come out. I followed Councilman Nettles' suggestion to do a decision matrix. And my matrix did not coincide with, did not coincide with the select committee. So I went to the Oregon Mayors Association and I also talked to legal and both encouraged this position.
Did you speak to outside legal counsel or?
Through the Ori, League of Oregon Cities. So I include apologies certainly to those whose names have already been made public. It's a horrible decision to be put in, I have to tell you. And I want to thank people on the committee for all of their hours that they put forward. I think this is something where I have heard from enough citizens that also support this kind of a decision. So let's put it, Leila, on the February work session next week.
Uh, next week's work session on the eleventh?
Get it top priority, get a slate of
Do you have a, is there anything staff needs to do to help prepare for that? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. There was a delay there.
Probably to, I think staff should run copies of all of the applications so that every council person can go through them. I would suggest doing a design, a, a decision matrix also. And then coming together and having a discussion about our findings.
Okay, so do you, you said you had a decision matrix.
I just, I just, yeah, I can give it to you. I just took it off of Karen's requirements. No different than the than what you have.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm happy to do whatever it takes. So I just want to clarify what I'm being asked to do is to I, I'm going to email out all the applications. And if you want printed copies, you can email me and I'll get those for you. But I'll email those to the four counselors, because I know you have your packet. And then I'll include a matrix. Then are you, maybe you can just continue and give direction to the council on what you would like to see happen?
Okay.
So, so can I, can I make a comment here?
Yes.
The process that was set in place has been completely replaced by the council coming up with its own decision-making on on the planning commission members. I just, I just want to make that clear, that you have put yourselves in the position of reviewing all of the work and completely setting aside the process that was put in place. And I would like to suggest to Mr. Dop, who has been very patient.
Yes, very.
That he be very wary of this council and how they will manage the process going forward with the budget. Thank you.
Karen, according to the charter, yes, I'm sorry, Jerry.
I, I understand your concern, Karen, but council has not decided anything right now. There is a rule of council procedure that codifies the process that's being discussed. And council has not voted to amend that rule. And until we do, you know, I, I think it's premature to say that we're, we're throwing everything out. We haven't had that discussion and we're not going to make that decision at a work session because we're not allowed to make those decisions at a work session.
But you have decided to review each of the, each of the candidates separately under your own matrices.
I haven't decided.
That is completely outside of the process. I just want to make, make that understood.
It's following your, the matrices that you laid out, Karen. It's no different. I mean, there's no new matrices. It's just asking for the counselors to understand who they're voting for when they put those names forward.
So we, we can't make a decision in the workshop. So all we do is talk. And then that means that no decision can be made until the February city council meeting.
Right.
And if I could just quickly interject, because I think councillor Spigman brought up an important point, a little different. It's just a process update. So the rules of procedure do indicate this is a process. The mayor does have the option to not accept the slate. There would be discussion about both process. So how to change that process is one discussion. And before new councillor, commissioners can be recommended, what I feel like I'm hearing councillor Spigman try to highlight is that those rules need to be updated in order for us to use that new process. And that requires a decision of council. So if we were, if council were to discuss the process at the work session, you would be prepared to make a decision to amend the rules in February. Then you could execute the process to appoint a planning commission. And if it ends up being the council doing that, whatever you all decide, that would need to be completed. You know, you'd have, basically, you'd have to figure out what council meeting you'd be able to go through that process and make that recommendation or prepare the resolution for appointment. So that, it, it, it takes some steps. I just want to be sure we all understand that those steps that the council technically can't just go and discuss and make a different approach and then make a different slate of rec, like there's a, there's a thoughtful process that, that has to be gone through in order to codify that, that change. Is that, did I get that right, Jerry?
Well, yeah, I think you got it right. But, but what I would also say is that this is somewhat of an extraordinary circumstance.
But, but what I would also say is that this is somewhat of an extraordinary circumstance. You have a brand new process used, being fully utilized for the first time. It was sort of half-used at the tail end of the STR committee process, but it's being used for the first time and you have a new mayor. And so I would ask that in extraordinary times, we use extraordinary measures to move quickly. And if that means
Right.
Call a special meeting of council
Right.
Work session, I think we should do that. I mean, I, it's going to be a busy month.
It is.
I think we should stay on this one because I, personally, to me, it's two very different questions. There is a process that some members want to take another hard look at, and I fully appreciate that and understand it. And then there is a utilization of that process that is squarely at issue with these three nominees. And that's really a different issue. It feels like we need to work on the first one first.
Right.
The second.
Right. Absolutely. That was good clarification, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any more discussion on this? Okay. So we, so, so Leila, we will be putting this top priority and trying to get it through.
Process, top priority, about the process.
Get it through. Right. Mr. Dopp, you have been oh so patient. I think you were the first one on this evening. And thank you for joining us. And as I understand it, you're going to be talking about criteria in the process that is such a hot issue here about budget committee members. Is that correct? You're on mute, I think. Mute. I still can't hear you. No, can't hear you. Are you still on mute?
That ought to do it.
There you go. Thank you for your patience tonight.
Not a problem. But based on the previous conversation, I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to be doing at this point. You have the criteria that we looked at, discussed and are proposing as being the criteria that we think ought to be used in the selection process. I didn't know what more you want from me now.
I thought that you're, I mean, I thought the criteria that you had, um, you know, was very specific and well organized and clearly defined. I didn't know if you had some other input that you wanted to provide about process, whether you were going to try to interview all candidate, you take half of them and you have how many openings? I think it is, is it three?
There are three positions that, that are coming open, correct?
Are they all four-year terms?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And they begin in January, is that correct? Or February? Oh, March, March. Okay. Thank you.
I knew they were out there, but.
Okay.
So, um, you know, from, from my perspective, um, I guess I do put a lot of strong feeling into what people are volunteering to do. I think it's radically important that they understand the amount of work that we're asking them to, to put in. And I, and I don't know that everybody out there who volunteers for things understands that.
Right.
Uh, I think the criteria of a, a really solid understanding of budget finance and specifically some background in government finance, if, if we can find it, uh, it's different. I've done both government and, and private sector and there are real differences. So I think it's really important to have a really solid background. I think you can take private sector knowledge and, and work to understand the differences in public sector financing, but those are an interview process, kind of a, how do you, how do you pull that out? And then lastly, uh, for me, I think the most, maybe the most important thing for a committee in a community the size of Manzanita is for the members of that committee to go in with open minds and to understand that the people on that committee are bringing a, a multitude of knowledge and background to that process. And even though on the front end, you may say, I don't agree with you. I think it's important to have the facility to listen to what's being said, to evaluate what people bring to the process and to make good decisions. I, uh, and I, and then obviously to reach out to your neighbors and to the community in general, the people you know, to make sure they understand the budget process. I think we have talked about transparency a lot tonight. You have. And I think that's vitally important. And I think the more that people on these committees talk to the people they know in the community about the process that they're going through, what it means, what the budget means, all of those things. I think the more that we can do that, the more transparent it becomes and the less that we find ourselves over here and over here. I, I, I'd love to see more people meeting in the middle.
Right. Mr. Dopp, according to the comprehensive plan, it sort of dictates that there needs to be representation logistically on committees and commissions. Do you happen to know, I mean, you don't want all of the committee members living in the same neighborhood, for example. Did you take that into consideration when the committee laid out the criteria?
I, I would have to say no, I really didn't.
Okay. Okay.
Can I say something, Mayor? I think that would be the, that's a great example of a perfect opportunity under the current process for council to continue to exercise a role. So when the selection committee comes forward with its criteria, if a member of council being asked to bless that criteria, spot something like you just did, that's a great opportunity to inject that and make the criteria better. So that, had we not had the prior discussion about the planning commission, if this was normal course of events right here, Jim would be presenting the proposed criteria to council for its approval. And council may have said back to the selection committee, looks good, except you need something in there about geographic balance. So that actually is the way it's supposed to work at this.
Did you finish, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Brad, what do you think? I mean, do, I, I guess what I'm kind of trying to understand is do we, um, thank Mr. Dopp for his time, take, um, and hammer out the planning commission process first and then see how that can be applied to the budget committee? Or do you have another, any thought?
No, I think that makes, makes the most sense to thank him for his time and do our, our next step, our next meeting and move forward.
Okay. And we can certainly take the criteria that's been presented, Mr. Dobbitt. Really, it'll be interesting to see, I think there's, I think there's a depth of talent here that will step forward. Jenna, do you have anything to say?
Yes. When, uh, when will applications go out for, obviously we have to work through things, but when do applications go out for the budget committee in order to get a March appointment?
Leila, do you know?
Well, it depends on your process. So normally go out in the next week or two for. Yeah. The process we currently use has three weeks for applicants. And I think that's actually a good window, but up to you guys. Then staff and the, you know, whoever the committee is, needs to review those applications and then have interviews. And so, you know, there's about a week because you got to schedule all of that and then make your decision and then prime it for the next council meeting. So really they got a March appointment. We need to start now.
Yep.
So if you wait to approve, I don't, you're going to have to figure out your new process.
Yeah.
So I think it's hard for me to, to tell you.
Right. I think we can go hand in hand with the two. I don't see why not.
Are we able to approve, um, criteria in a different meeting other than this one? Or will we have to wait till February because that will be too tight? You would need a decision, a meeting you can make a decision in.
So, so I, Gina, are you asking, should we look at the criteria and approve the criteria tonight and then assume that that criteria will fit in the selection process?
I, I think we should move forward and, and make an approval. And if our process changes, then that will trickle down. But if it doesn't, then we can stick to it and move forward.
So let me ask if we wanted to add in the comprehensive plan logistics, broadening that. But it's not on these criterias presented. Does that require something else or can we just add it in later? I'm, I'm.
No. If we've gone through sort of the, the process, part of what staff is coming to ask for today is that feedback. So to say, here's what we came up with. So council has the option and opportunity to make recommendations and then by motion say, we adopt these as presented with these additions. And then we'll pull that from the record and finalize the, the requirement, the criteria.
So, I mean, just going around, Jerry, would you be prepared to approve the criteria as stated in the packet with any additions at this point or?
Well, yes, I helped, I helped on the selection committee draft the criteria. I like what you're saying about the comp plan. I must say, although I've read the comp plan, I'm not familiar with that particular language. Assuming it says that you.
Diversity.
Yeah, well, it makes sense. And if we can, and I think all of our committees should reflect a, a diversity on many levels, including.
Exactly.
So, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that's inarguable.
So add that in and you would vote yes on this? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Brad?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Jenna?
Yep.
Okay. Linda?
I just need more clarification in the diversity issue. I'm not quite sure what you're saying.
Um, I don't have my comp plan in front of me, but basically you don't want all of your people in a committee living on the same street. So the comp plan asks that there be diversity in gender, economic factors, logistics. You know, there's like five or six of those that we can pull forth, but that's, that's the reference. You don't want all committee members living on the same street, essentially.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that. I, basically, I agree with, uh.
So you would approve the criteria with that condition added?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So I would too, I need a motion then to approve the budget criteria as presented by Mr. Dopp with the inclusion of logistic diversity that addresses the comp plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Thank you.
And seconded?
I will second.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. So we have that approved. Mr. Dopp, thank you so much for your time and patience.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. It's important work that you've done for us here.
Okay.
We are coming to the end of the meeting and upon adjournment of the regular session, the council needs to meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute O R S 192.6602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the news media may attend by joining the meeting using the Zoom link provided for in the agenda, but may not disclose any information discussed. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. And is there a second?
Do we have a city manager report?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. It's not in my little red letters there.
Oh, bollocks. Sorry about that.
Okay. Yes, we are supposed to have a city manager report.
You have to have one if you want one. Give you a quick one. I'll just quickly go through that on my list. I just wanted to let folks know out in the community and this council too, I've told all of you, but we're, we've reopened the administration service counter. So over here off Dorcas Ave, I'm from nine to noon, Monday through Thursday. So we're going to see how that works and go from there. We do continue to ask people to please handle payments and other things that they can online. And, uh, but yeah, feel free to come by if you are, need anything from us. I do want to note that building and planning are not located at city hall and they do not have the ability to take walk-in folks. So they will still remain by appointment only. Just another shout out just to business license folks out there. We've gotten about half of the business licenses returned for this year's renewal. You have until the end of the month before we start charging late fees. So please go to our city website and you can do that online and take care of it as soon as you can. We are still planning on having court this month so far. And that's going to be on the 20th of January at the Haylam Bay Fire and Rescue Building. Planning Commission will be meeting on the 17th. There was no formal planning applications that will be for the commission, but we do plan to have a transportation systems plan update. That was actually scheduled originally for tonight, but they didn't get us the report in time. So it's going to go to Planning Commission first, which is actually probably more appropriate anyway. And then we'll bring them to city council. And that's close to completion. I just want to highlight the work sessions that referenced a couple of times will be held next week. It starts at 2:00 PM. It'll be via Zoom. The city hall update will be on that. And then we'll be talking about appointment process. Council will be doing a goal-setting session this Friday from 9:00 to 2:00. And city offices will be closed on January 16th in recognition of the great, late Martin Luther King Jr. I just wanted to give a shout out and appreciate the council's acknowledgement of the public work staff who have, many of them gave up vacations, that they were off with their families to come in and help clear the roads. So I want to thank them for that. I know that we lost close to 20 trees. There are a handful more that need to be removed and we expect limbs and trees to continue to fall as the wind is sustained. So just please be careful out there. If you do see anything in the right of way, take note, you can call Public Works at 503 368-5347. Those are your office hour times. And then if you see an emergency or on-call person can be located, contacted at 503-457-6319. Thank you. Now you can adjourn.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you all for your patience on this first evening. It's a, it's kind of a lot to absorb and I appreciate your help, certainly. So I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. Oh, come on. You don't want to.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Chana. So we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? So I will announce that the first meeting in January is adjourned. Thank you all.
Well done.
Um, we're going to take a five-minute break before we go into executive session. So I'll set my timer and see you back here in five minutes. Thank you.